Okay, good morning, everybody, and welcome to the November 9, 2023 Board of Selectmen meeting. And as always, we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October 26, 2023?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All is in favor. Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
And is there a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of October 26, 2023?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All is in favor. Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Okay, thank you so much. We'll go right over to the updates. I'll start with the first selectmen. I want to thank all of the poll workers, everybody in the town clerk's office and registrar voters for a very successful election day. And all of the candidates that put their names out there, no matter how they fared, we owe them a debt of gratitude. All the people who put together debates, we really enjoyed them, and I think they were very informative for the voters. And, you know, reading some of the comments in the paper, I have to say that Greenwich was a winner. We had, really, we showed, I think, the rest of the state and maybe even the country, you can run races and not have to disparage people and come out okay. And we had a high voter turnout, which was great. I don't think we had any incidents, which is great. And again, it was nice. And for those who may have run, especially in the RTM races, and fell a little short because there were so many, which was really great to see. I spoke to several already, and we encouraged them to come forward to look at boards, committees, and commissions. And if there's nothing there, look at the first selectmen's page. We've put together some committees in the last four years that don't have to go through the approval process, and there's some there. I think there's something there for everybody. And as we go towards a new term, I think it's always good to look at all of those committees and see how we want to inject some more passion into them, maybe some different viewpoints. So we'll be looking at all of them and asking and looking for people to join them and see what we can do about building on what's been accomplished these past four years. So looking forward to all that. And again, thank you, everybody who came out and exercised their civic duty. Veterans Day ceremonies, we have several. We have Greenwich Avenue on the 11th at 11 o'clock. And then, right after that, Byram is going to do a parade during the day. We've normally done parades at night there, so this is a new thing. So we're looking forward to that. On Friday, I'll be heading over to Riverside for a few minutes for their ceremony, and then over to Cosco School for their ceremony. They both do a great job there. Thanksgiving at the Senior Center will be the 16th. And later that night will be the Greenwich Old Timers Athletic Association, which is always a great event where we honor local honorees, athletes, and also national ones. If you've never been to one, really good to attend. It's a lot of fun. It's a very short one today, so I'll turn it over to Lauren. Good morning, Lauren.
Good morning, Fred. And I echo your thoughts. Thanks to everyone who made Election Day so successful, and the weather cooperated too. Thanks to all the teams that worked the polls and everything that led up to it with the town clerk, the registrar of voters. And echo your thoughts with the high turnout Greenwich did win, and I'm very thrilled and grateful to be serving the town again. And can you said it, that the band is back in place? Is that what, is that how you refer to it? The band's back together? And really looking forward to doing some different things in the next two years with the RTM being many new faces. You know, we had already started to talk about between snack and the moderator, some training on FOI, training on interviewing candidates for the boards, commissions, and committees. So excited to put that into place so that when the new RTM gets sworn in in January, we'll be able to hit the ground running. So that's what I'll be focused on for the next month and a half or so, as well as attend all the different celebrations as we get into the holiday season. And I agree with Fred, thanks to everyone that put their name out there and, you know, wanted to serve our community. And we do have opportunities with all the boards, commissions, and committees. So, you know, definitely reach out if there's something that you're interested in and to participate. We would really appreciate it.
Thanks. And I think I missed the town clerk, so I'll hear about that later. They did a lot of work, so I appreciate that. I did, oh, thank you. All right, good morning, Janet.
Good morning. And yes, Tuesday's municipal election is now behind us, and thank you to everyone who came out to vote. I'd like to congratulate Fred and Lauren. And while she may not be joining us on the board, I'd like to congratulate my running mate, Laura Erickson. We ran an honest and heartfelt campaign, and her gracious leadership inspires me. The success of American democracy is the ability of our citizens to let their leaders know how well they are being served. No society will agree on everything, and it is to our credit that candidates can debate a wide range of issues, then accept the will of the electorate, and come back together to serve the public good. The debates and voter turnout, in part, reflected the frustration of many in our community over the state of our schools and public safety among a list of concerns. We would all do well to take heed and work together on these issues. I agree, there are many people to thank for making Tuesday's election happen so smoothly. And I also want to take the opportunity to especially thank our registrars of voters and the small army of poll workers. They are the unsung heroes of our democracy. In some ways, this will be a new beginning for the three of us, but much will remain the same. I remain committed to civility and collegiality while promoting transparency, good governance, public engagement, and open discourse. I will say what needs to be said and work to make sure our community is heard and every perspective represented. I will uphold the inclusive and forward-thinking values of our community. It is an honor and privilege to continue to serve as a Greenwich Select person. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. There is no old business today, so we're going to go up, go on to new business. And we have a request for an amendment to our parking schedule. And here, it's a two-hour parking, two-hour timed parking. And we have a 12-hour metered parking proposal. And we have Deputy Chief Craig Gray here of our Parking Services. And Luanne.
Morning.
Welcome back, team.
Good to see you.
Deputy Chief Craig Gray, I'm here in my capacity as the Director of Parking Services. And so I'll just get right into it. The first one is what we call housekeeping, right? This is the, oh, no, sorry. This is housekeeping. The amendment agenda, proposed amendment to the traffic ordinance. These amendments pertain to Schedule 4, two-hour parking, excuse me, Schedule 9, two-hour parking, Schedule 8, two-hour timed, and Schedule, no, I did it wrong. I'm sorry.
Too many schedules there. You got me confused. I was looking at this morning.
It's a Roman numeral, so sometimes I have to go back to elementary school. Bottom line, we are proposing to update the charter to reflect the signage and parking enforcement currently in place, which has been previously approved by the previous Board of Selectmen, but inadvertently were not submitted as updates to the town charter. So it's just basic housekeeping to match what should have been done before.
That, you know, I read that before, and I know it's, this is nothing, a big deal. I mean, we normally have a second read. I don't think anybody's going to complain, but unless it's time-sensitive, you know, is it time-sensitive?
No. We've been operating this way for a little while, but, you know, it's up to you.
Yeah, I mean, I'll let my colleagues decide on it. I mean, I would, I'm willing to take a vote on it now, but if anybody has an objection, just one voice of objection, I'm willing to put it off for two weeks.
I don't have an objection because we've already, it's already been approved. It's just that it hasn't been
Captured.
Captured into the charter.
It was just an oversight. So, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with voting. For that reason, I'm fine with voting on it today.
Yeah, okay, thank you. We're all in agreement. All right, well, have a motion for this.
Okay. Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the request for amendment to Schedule 2-Hour Parking 9. I'm going to have the Roman numeral issue, too. Schedule 12, 2-Hour Time Parking, and Schedule, oh, no, whatever. Whatever those Roman numerals are.
As written.
As written, thank you. Oh, my gosh, thank you.
You should have cheated off me in school. No, I'm only kidding. I was not, math was not my class subject.
I think I have to second. Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All is in favor. Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Okay, thank you. Now on to number two.
All right, so number two. This one's slightly different. So this is a recommendation of implementation of a Greenwich Merchant Parking Permit Program. So obviously, in a continuation of trying to nuance parking situations in Central Greenwich Business District, you know, working with the inventory that we have, you know, we continue to monitor the best that we can. You know, we're pulling data, analyzing usage, and we're hoping that perhaps this might be an enhancement to the parking situation downtown. Again, I would say it's not a magic wand. It's not going to solve all the issues. But I recommend the implementation of a Greenwich Merchant Parking Permit Program as an extension of the Central Greenwich Parking Permit that we instituted. It should be instituted effective January 2024. This would provide additional parking to merchants and employees, most likely those primarily located on the Lower Greenwich Avenue due to the proximity of the parking lots, which are going to be designated by Parking Services. This program would be available to employees or merchants with a business establishment within the clearly defined boundaries of downtown Greenwich, which provide annual parking permits that would allow those employees to park only in the designated parking areas in the Horse Neck Lane and Island Beach parking lots. The day parking spaces in Island Beach are currently underutilized, and we just readjusted them and added another 44 spaces down there. Those would be part of the area that we'd be offering. The idea is kind of, you know, currently, those lots are those commuting out. These would be for those commuting in. But it's the same general, it's the same area. Commuters are commuters, out and in. By continuing to provide qualified employees with parking alternatives at a reduced annual rate when compared to meter fees, the town will benefit by providing as much-needed service to the merchants and also further a longstanding goal of diverting long-term parkers from parking in short-term two-hour spaces. Like the Central Greenwich Permit Parking Program, effective since 2021, has proven to be successful. We have reached the capacity for the Central Greenwich area of 200 annual parking permits since its inception. So one of the things that we did do recently before going through this is we did a, you know, there's 10 lots that are part of the Central Greenwich Permit. And so what we did is we tried to determine the actual usage of where the people are choosing to park. And we find that it's heavily in the Liberty Way Lot, you know, recollect, it's heavily in there. The Bruce Lot is also heavily used also. We do know that the Grigg Street Lot is also heavily used by employees in the area. And so when we have taken out, so the Grigg Street Lot is more towards the bottom. It's probably at capacity very soon. That reduction in the, we added the express parking, which reduces it by five. I think that perhaps there may be some people that typically park in the Grigg Street Lot that the shift down to Horse Neck might be okay, right? It's all about, you know, how far people are willing to walk, and we recognize that. So some of the highlights that we'll talk about is that the permits would only be offered to employees and businesses, establishments that are within the boundaries of the Greenwich Downtown District. And the packet that you have there, it'll show you the actual location. This is an area that's been on the maps for a long time. And in fact, it's identical to what we use for the Central Greenwich Permit on the main part of Greenwich Avenue. The permits would be valid for one year, January 1 through December 31, and they should be able to renew annually. An annual cost of the permit would be $466, prorated based on the month issued. This matches the other cost. There's no difference in cost, right? So it's equal, commuting in, commuting out. A total of, right now, we're planned that we're going to limit the actual distribution to see how many actual people take them. The goal right now is just to start with about 25 so that we don't overtax those areas. Excuse me, those two lots, Horse Neck and Island Beach Lots. Those are the two areas where they'd be available. So those are just some of the program highlights. And again, I would just, you know, off the cuff, I would just tell you that, again, the day parking is down, the number of people that actually day parking, the PEOs on the ground that are watching daily, anecdotally, tell me that besides our actual lot counts, they see that people are utilizing the permits a little bit more and more. So, you know, pre-pandemic, you know, during the pandemic and post-pandemic, we're starting to rise up again. Again, it is, I would tell you that based upon our analysis, Mondays and Fridays are dead, but Wednesdays are very, very heavy. And so we could easily reach capacity on Wednesdays, and Tuesdays and Thursdays are also pretty heavy, too. But it is Wednesday that is the big day. And in the end, we have to make sure that, you know, if we offer a permit, that we have some space for people to park. Although there is no guarantee, and we've never guaranteed that you'll get a parking space, we still, it's reasonable that you can expect, if you have paid for a permit, that to be parking there, so.
Thank you so much, Chief, for all the work you're putting into this. This, just so people know, Lauren and I, when we first came into office, we had endeavored to, to look at parking and to work with Parking Services, and we wanted to address the employees on the avenue that were feeding meters. And this has been something that's been going on for decades. We've been very successful with the help of the Police Department and Parking Services to take 200 of those meter feeders off the avenue now. This is an extension of that. This is probably geared towards more down the bottom of the avenue. And as the chief said, there's no guarantee spaces will be available, but certainly, this is in keeping what we're trying to do down there. As we also work with, privately with the private property owners there to come up with other solutions, although there's a lot going on with parking, but this is, this is a big one because it does free up spaces, and all your work on this is greatly appreciated. And it's a first read, so we'll certainly get some feedback, but this is in keeping what we've been doing for four years now. So thank you.
So, I'd also like, did you want to go ahead, Lauren?
You could go ahead.
I was just going to say, thank you for all this work. Yes, absolutely, parking is such a big issue. I'm wondering, when, I imagine we would, we're going to go ahead at the second read and vote this in. When do you think we would be seeing some impacts from this? I'm just wondering, because, you know, just from the point of view of good policy, it would be great to have you come back, you know, give you, give you whatever amount of time you think that it would take for us to see some impacts, and then have you come back to report to us to say, you know, how well it's working so that we can continue to make adjustments.
Hard to say, you know, I, you know, I always say I don't have a crystal ball. You know, there's a lot of moving parts for this. In the end, we're just fighting human nature, right? I mean, it's, and, you know, it's an uphill battle, and Greenwich Avenue is uphill from those lots. And so, so often, people just don't want to make that trip. But I, there's, there's businesses that are on the, on Revode Avenue and, you know, that area that perhaps this will be beneficial to them. And so each ripple effect of maybe draw a few from that area down there because it's reasonable will then free up some space above. And I can't tell you, you know, exactly when we could see it, but, you know, six months. We're, I'm going to, we're going to analyze it anyway, right? We're taking a look at it all the time because this is all about, you know, one, two, three, four spaces, you know, managing every space we have. And, you know, on that note, again, anecdotally, I would say that the red meters have definitely had an impact for traffic down there. They're not flawless, but it's actually working the way in which we had hoped. This is coming from the PEOs. There's spaces available. There's turnover. The Uber driver, Uber Eats drivers, those that do that delivery-type service, are finding spaces that they can get in and out. And most importantly, from a parking enforcement perspective, they're not double parking, not parking at the fire hydrant, crosswalks, they're looking for and parking there and moving on. So you don't necessarily see it every day, but there's less double parkers. A real issue down there right now for us is the commercial trucks. There's just not enough space in the way in which deliveries are done on a regular basis. There's just not enough space for them to be in a convenient location to do their deliveries. Now, we made a change, the board made a change on East Elm Street, that we doubled the size of the loading zone over there. And, you know, we call that the 50-yard line right there east on Elm Street, you know, upper and lower. It's not ideal for them, but it's a location that they know should be open. And if I can get two vans in there, great. If I can get a truck and a van in there, that's just less double parkers and issues. So, on that note.
Yeah, no, that would be, that would be great. If you think, you know, if you're, if you're tracking this and doing the analysis and you think six months would be a fair amount of time to let it be in effect, I would love to have you come back in those six months and give us a report, even if it's informal. That would be great.
Luanne, what do you, what do you think?
Well, we would be publicizing it and advertising it, you know, through social media, the newspapers, like we do with the Central Greenwich, we just push it out there. People are on the way.
Oh, Luanne, would you step up for a microphone for the public record?
Thank you. Don't make sure the
Sorry, I apologize. So it would be like the Central Greenwich Permit. We put it out there through social media, through press releases, through our website, and letting people know. And we had, then we would collate a list, compile a list, and you would just, you know, and then the minute we would have it, you're on the list, as long as you qualify, you pay, you'll be issued. So 25 should go rather quickly. So we had very good luck, success with the Central Greenwich Permit. And also, the people on the Central, there's this waitlist for Central Greenwich Permits. There's like 60 people, but we don't know where they are, like, occasionally, and they may, they already may be at the bottom, so they may be our target audience. They put themselves on that list, and, you know, it's also just how quickly people will get on the list, and we will effectuate it. Turnover will be immediate from my department.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, so I was thinking to approve this sooner as late, sooner than later because we have the holiday season approaching. And, you know, that I've mentioned many times that the bottom of the avenue seems to fill up super fast. I was even open to adjusting the time that the meters, so going before 9:00 because I noticed that it's, it's pretty much packed. So I think it's exciting to give people towards the bottom of the avenue some options. And if it is cheaper and you have the waiting list, and, you know, we are adding the spaces, people may be interested in walking up the hill a little bit. Yeah, so I would like to do this sooner as opposed to later.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I know the holiday season is coming, and this is actually a positive. There is no guarantee. The only little difference that you mentioned is, you know, the other lots that we have, they're, they're walking across and, you know, parallel and not uphill so much. But here it is, you know, this is geared towards that area there, as Luanne said. So I have, I would guess that these will fill up, although as Harokosel used to say, "Time will tell." But I think, yeah, I mean, if, right now, it's, well, if two more weeks, it would be
The 21st.
It's not even. We're meeting on Tuesday before the Thanksgiving.
Yeah, so I think we can, yeah, I would definitely, if this was, if this was right before Thanksgiving, I would entertain a motion to vote now. But I think we have, we have two weeks here, so we can, we can do, we can follow up on that. But I think it's going to be very positive. You've done a great job with this and the other, and the other areas, so. All right, we'll revisit this in two weeks.
Okay.
Chief, thank you so much. Luanne, thank you.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. Next up is a request for a temporary closure of Delavan Avenue for the November 11, Byron Veterans Association March, and this is time-sensitive. And we have
Mr. Tedesco.
Mr. Tedesco. Oh, Mr. Tedesco, thank you. Hiding in plain sight. Sorry about that. Good to see you.
Good morning. I don't know what I'm supposed to say.
Your name?
Charles Tedesco, I'm the acting commander.
Please turn on your microphone.
Sorry.
Could you just explain why we need the road closed and for how long?
Where, the parade is going to start at 1:00 in the afternoon. We would like to close the road between 1:00 and 4:00, or 3:00 if possible. We're going to be serving food outside, like we always, you know, little whatever. Once we come back from the firehouse, the people have a tendency to congregate outside, where they're permitting, and that's the reason why we'd like it closed.
Okay, and it's, is it the state, the normal, just for clarification purposes, we've done this dozens of times.
Yes.
But the, so people who are maybe watching may not be familiar, the area of closure would be Delavan Avenue.
It'd be Veterans Way.
Veterans Way, and just Veterans Way.
Just Veterans Way. Obviously, we're going to march down Delavan Avenue, but that's not going to be closed.
Right.
It's just for the duration of the parade.
Yeah, it was just, the way it was written down here was as a closure of Delavan Avenue, but Butch and everybody had mentioned to us before that this was going to be, so it's just Veterans Way.
That's it.
It's not a very big, it's not a very long parade route, so I suspect probably 1:00 to 3:00 would be fine. Anybody who can't make that in two hours, there's, there's an issue there, so. Yeah, I think, you know, I'm okay 1:00 to 4:00, but I think 1:00 to 3:00 may be a little bit better for people who may want to use that.
And that's fine with us.
Yeah. It's a short, it's really short. Okay, well, this is time-sensitive, so we'll entertain a motion for this.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we request the temporary closure of Delavan Avenue on November 11 for the Byram Veterans Association March. Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All is in favor. Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Okay, Mr. Tedesco, thanks so much.
Thank you very much, and I hope I see somebody from the diocese there. Thank you.
You will.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. Okay, next up is discussion of the lease renewal for Greenwich Community Gardens Incorporated. And we have Amina Ahmad, here, Assistant Town Attorney. Good morning, Amina.
Good morning. First of all, congratulations to the board.
Thank you.
I know there are two representatives here also from the community garden, and they may wish to speak or answer any questions you may have. This is a pretty straightforward renewal of the lease. Community Gardens has been doing good work, continues to do good work. We've been in touch with the Department of Parks and Recreation. There have been no issues. Initially, this is a 10-year lease, and as you see from my memo, the first 10-year term expires February of next year, and the community garden has asked for an as-of-right extension for another 10 years. So they gave us the required notice, and we really see no issues with extending for another 10 years. So that's really all I have to say. And again, as I said, there are two representatives from the community gardens here.
Thank you so much, Amina.
And if I may, I know this is listed as a first read. Again, I'll leave it to your discretion if you think it needs to go back on the agenda for later this month. There is no time issue, but just wanted to point out that it is listed as a first read. But there seem to be no issues so far.
Thank you, yes. This is great. I don't know if Terry and Ricky want to come up here or say anything, but having had one of these plots many years ago, this is one of the great ideas that's come about in the last several years. And there's at least two that we know of, right? We have Bible Street, and we have one over at Armstrong Court. They're very, very popular. I'd love to see more of these. But, you know, I think it's great if it, again, this is something we could vote on right now, but if it's not time-sensitive, we're just trying to respect the, a little bit of a tradition that we do here. But floor is yours, Rick.
It's very exciting to be here after 10 years. After 10 years, we're back. It's very exciting to be here. And I look back at the lease, and right there in the front, it says, "We will build the town an asset in return for the use of the land." And we were very sensitive to that. And if you've been up there and you've spent some time there, you can see how appealing the place is for the hundreds and hundreds of people that have used it. We've got the perfect use for open space there, and we're well-integrated into the, into the land and the land with us. The animals are spectacular if you just sit there. And, I mean, there's really nothing like it in town. And, you know, we've got universal gardens for people, persons with disabilities, so they can get access to the garden as well. And we're very excited about the next 10 years, very excited. No complaints by neighbors, none. And I think we found the perfect use. At one time, this had actually been proposed to be used for a fire tower. Imagine a fire tower in Pine Etem. Not such a good idea, so I think we found the perfect use.
There were some other proposals too, I remember 20 years ago. But, are these still there?
These are there.
Yeah, good.
These are there.
Well, hopefully, people don't get locked in like I did one night. I was working, it's a true story, I was working and they locked the gate on me, and I had this scale, is it still high? Because I, it took me a while. But, it's a, it's a great, great asset there. And thank you so much, Erin, for, for all you've done. And there's one also up, but, near, between Parsonage and Nathaniel.
Yes, Terry Brown-Cutson, Greenwich Community Gardens. There's a third garden, and this is its fifth year. It is on the public, the town land at Nathaniel Witherell, and it's called the Culinary Wellness Garden, and it was built by volunteers with the objective of growing food for the chef to use in meal preparation for the residents, and that's what happens there. So, it's just another form of community, and a lot of people enjoy just having a chance to go and pitch in and do a little gardening in the summer. Yeah.
A great thing to do, thank you.
You're welcome. I'd like to thank the town for being such a great partner on this public-private partnership. It's been a great journey for us. We're honored, and we'll continue to do our best to keep the gardens healthy and active. Thank you.
Can you just identify yourself for the record?
Sure. Terry Brown-Cutson, Chair of Greenwich Community Gardens.
Thank you. And if there's a fourth anywhere, let us know, we'll be ready to approve that too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll see you in two weeks, thank you. Next up is a request for a temporary road closure of East Elm Street for private development, for a private development project. I don't know, is Chris Franco here? Or a proxy for Chris?
Yeah, I'm Luca Dodaro. Unfortunately, Chris was unable to make it. This is a continuation of the previous road closure we have presented before this board. Unfortunately, due to bad weather and unforeseen underground road conditions, we were not able to complete the work in the expected timeframe that we set previously. We are asking for, this upcoming week, November 13th to the 18th, to be able to close that road down. It will only be in effect during construction hours, and it will only block through traffic. Pedestrian traffic will not be blocked off, and all local traffic will be able to exit and enter the road and their driveways. That's pretty much it.
Okay, and you said Luca, right?
Yeah, Luca Dodaro.
Luca, thanks, and it's the coming week?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so this, this is time-sensitive. And where, is the project coming towards completion now?
Yeah, we're about at 80% completion, 80 to 90% completion. Two houses are practically done. We're just doing the finishing touches and all connections to the town. That property unfortunately has all ledge underneath it, so it's taken a lot longer than we had expected to, I mean, break through it. It's solid white granite, enough on.
I know, and it looks like it's almost done. But, yeah, I just wanted to clear that up there in case there was any questions. But, yeah, we want to see the project get done, and I'm certainly ready to waive that, the second read for this one.
So, our paperwork says Friday, the 17th, but you just mentioned the 18th, so will it still be, needed to be closed on that Saturday?
I would really appreciate if you allowed me to close it on that Saturday. The upcoming moratorium is coming into effect, I believe Pete Klingel told me, Thanksgiving, so I just need as many days as possible to get through it. If you can grant it, that'd be spectacular. We might not end up needing that day as well, but it would go a long way to at least have the option.
Thanks, so I thank the, the neighbors, they would love to see this get done, as would you, so I, I'm okay with that.
So, I'll abstain, because I, I definitely want to help see this project get done sooner rather than later, and I appreciate, you know, the reason for the delays. At the same time, whenever we waive the second read, it creates a precedent, and then, you know, we, we get other people coming before the board, asking for that same consideration. And generally speaking, we really, we really do need to have two reads, so that, so that we know that the public has time to be aware of these projects and give us feedback. So, in that, in that spirit, I will abstain.
Thank you, yeah, so this is, this, we're not violating our precedent, we, this is time-sensitive, and the project is almost done, and I think the neighbors really want this done, so there's no sense to, to push this off. So, okay, we'll do a...
Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the request for a temporary road closure on East Elm Street from Monday, November 13th through Saturday, November 18th.
Fred Camillo will second that. All those in favor? Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I abstain.
Okay, thank you so much, Luca.
Thank you all so much.
Appreciate it, thank you. Okay, finally, we have a discussion of the Round Hill Association's Back Country Traffic Study. Let's see, two friends here, three friends, and John Conti is going to lead off. Good morning, John.
Good morning. Congratulations to you all, and my name is John Conti, I'm the President of the Round Hill Association, and I appreciate the time to be on your agenda. It seems that today was largely about cars and roadways, and so it's maybe apropos to have this discussion about our roadways in the area of the Round Hill Association, which is back, back country, sort of northwest portion of town. And we had several residents come forward to really bring our attention to a problem of increasing traffic, more pressure on the roadways, cut-throughs, people speeding, going faster on road, winding roads that were really never intended for that. And for whatever reason, the addition of new commercial space, new development pressures, schools, the airport, the, the back country roads are just getting a lot more road wear than, than in the past. And so, several of our members have expressed concerns, and our board got together and voted to underwrite a, a limited traffic study, really for the benefit of knowledge, understanding, seeing if there's any things that can be done that we might offer to the town as a informative and helpful guide, really, understanding that we don't have any authority to do anything, but we simply wanted to try to learn, understand the problem, and share that information. That being said, and knowing that Planning and Zoning often entertains applications, and a lot of what they have to weigh and, and deal with is understanding traffic. And so, we shared our report with Planning and Zoning, so that when they are reviewing applications, they would have this information to understand what's going on in the back country as well. We were very fortunate to have Margarita Albin, the Chair of Planning and Zoning, and Patrick LaRoe, the Director, sat and listened to our presentation. They thought it was helpful, and in fact, said at the end of that meeting, gee, we really think it would be a good idea for you to share this with the Board of Selectmen, because these ideas are really town-wide beneficial, and so we certainly would like to share that. So, really, our, our purpose for being here today is to share information. After you hear our presentation from Mr. Don Ton, who is with Sam Schwartz Company, an engineering firm that does this kind of thing, all sorts of land use planning and study. It's about a 10-minute slide presentation. And then, maybe we hear from Brendan DeSimone, who is one of our executive board members, and he spearheaded this project. So, if you'd just allow us, we could certainly do a question and answer. We don't really have a specific ask, we just want to share information. And if you find it beneficial and useful, we would be more than happy to have our representatives sit with DPW or yourselves, and, you know, just basically have them look at some of these ideas and hopefully make some improvements. Again, this is not just about the Round Hill Area Association, we hope it can be useful townwide. So, with that...
Much appreciated.
Mr. Don Ton.
Thank you, John. Ken, what was, Jenny going to help with the...
He is, yes.
Okay, thank you. My name's Don Ton, I am a Vice President and Senior Director of the Traffic Group at Sam Schwartz. I'm also a resident of the town for, for over 20 years with my family, and...
Right behind you, Scott.
Okay, great, thank you. And my wife Kathleen is a teacher at the Eagle Hill School for, this will be her 27th year, so. Yes, I had the good fortune over the last few months. You know, today, I'm obviously here on behalf of the Round Hill Association, and the last few months, we had a chance to really get to know the Round Hill Association, learning what their challenges are, and understanding some of the issues they have. We spent initially a lot of attention talking about some of the kind of external things going on in the, in the neighborhood that are affecting their quality of life. But then, as we talked more, we started to kind of look a little bit more inward, in looking at our roads and streets as a resource or extension of our community, and then what we can do to help protect them. So, what initially was kind of a traffic impact study, we quickly redefined as something being more of a, a, a neighborhood protection plan. So, next slide, please. And we started out, just kind of, just getting on the same page in regarding to goals and objectives. We identified here, number one, which is to improve the overall safety of our local streets, that's, that's obvious. And number two, we spent a little bit, a little bit of time talking about as well, which is promoting a health, a healthy and active lifestyle for all ages through walking and biking, and also, number three, building a stronger community by reconnecting residents. Now, when you think of North Porchuck, Porchuck Road, and Old Mill, maybe two and three don't really come into focus as clearly as number one would. But, you know, it wasn't always that way, and there are actually long-term families that, that kids actually learned to ride their bikes on Old Mill. And there was an interesting phenomenon as part of COVID, where when we were all on lockdown and the traffic went away, well, it wasn't uncommon for people to start getting out of their houses and walking these streets, and actually, you know, getting some exercise after dinner for a walk, and then running into neighbors and saying hello, and it became a way to connect community. And then, when, when a car or traffic was coming down the street at the same time the pedestrians were out there, well, it wasn't a surprise that those cars actually changed their behavior. So, I don't want to concede the fact that, that these roads aren't available for other uses, and part of our neighborhood protection plan is trying to find that right balance to, to, to make it accessible to more than just where it seems to be directed that today. So, next slide, please. We also wanted to, to make sure that, Jenny, next slide, please? That what we're talking about here wasn't specifically targeted just to those residents that lived on those streets. How can we come up with a proposal that we can kind of develop various concepts and strategies that we can present to the town as a toolkit for other town agencies, like, like Planning and Zoning, to use as part of their evaluation process? When they have to weigh on one hand, new developments and finding the right scale for the community, and finding that balance against, well, how do we demonstrate our commitment to protecting the community? And we wanted this to be a tool that could help along those lines as well. So, the benefits would extend well beyond the, the RHA. And, and the third one is pretty much a, a part of the agenda for, for this board, is that it really fits in with, with the, the town's current vision of, of really prioritizing safety on our streets. But I have a couple slides here to give you a little context on what's going on up at Round Hill. Number one, we, we have over 1,100 households, and there's very little commercial use, there's very little retail use, and all the, the neighborhood streets are defined as just improved local roadways. So, there are no roadways in Round Hill right now designated as primary, secondary, or even, or even artillery roadways. There's no truck routes on these neighborhoods. Now, that's not how the roadways are being used today. Next slide, please. The existing conditions that we're experiencing in the area is characterized by a lot of cut-throughs, speedings, and crashes. The cut-through traffic is, if you've ever, you know, been on, around North Porchuck Road after a soccer game on King Street, it, it is a primary access for cut-through SUVs to find their way to the Merritt. So, although it's not a high-volume roadway, the high percentage of people using the roadways aren't our local residents, and they're not behaving like their local residents, frankly. So, there's a lot of excess speeding. For the most part, the speed limit is 25 miles an hour, but well over a majority of the population is, is traveling well in excess of that. And the crash rate is of particular concern. It's well and above the statewide average, and Brendan loves when I use my... These are all our crashes in, in our, in our immediate study area. We had, you can see on the chart there, we had a slight reprieve during the, during COVID, but everything's trending in the wrong direction now as we get back to normal. We've already had seven crashes this year, and one of the crashes involved an injury that required some transport to hospital. Now, for, for my next slide, it's not all the users that are contributing to these conditions, some part of it is the physical streetscape as well. Here are the, for the roadways that we've been focusing on, north, John Street, North Porchuck, Porchuck, and Old Mill. And, well, you can, I'll get to this in a minute, but some of the characteristics of the roadways, John Street in particular, seems to be more prevalent with the speeding, but you'll notice that the one roadway, North Porchuck, that is most amendable to walking your dog and getting out, is missing something that the other three have on that picture, and I'll get back to that in a minute. But some other elements, next slide, please. If you notice, almost every entrance point to these roadways are these wide-open necks that encourage these high-speed movements, and that it's not uncommon, this is where looking northbound on Riversville Road, where when you're coming off Riversville Road onto Porchuck, I mean, you barely have to kind of lift off the gas and you sweep right into these, these side streets at such a high volume, at such a high speed, that it is uncomfortable if you're out walking your dog or biking. You know, the same, couple other examples, I don't want to spend too much of your time. Here's Riversville Road. One back, please. One more forward. I'm sorry, okay, one more up, please, I'm sorry. Next slide, please.
Riversville to north, to north.
So, here we have, this is looking southbound on Round Hill, where we're entering Old Mill. Same kind of idea. It's just a long sweeping curve that promotes a high-speed movement. That is something that, that would be considered pretty easily correctable. The, next slide, please. This is interesting, this is North Porchuck, where we actually have multiple options to enter at high speeds. I mean, this could be, you could extend that certain corner of it and make it another community garden like we saw before, and remove some of that paycheck. But the, the point is, next slide, please, is that we already have this poor geometry that, that we could correct, and we also have some considered bad users that are now driving the roadways properly, and this creates the baseline upon which there's all this additional concern with all these, the future developments coming online, whether it's the Greenwich Woods, Wildflower, or Greenwich American. It's going to be over 650 new units. Those units, where they're positioned along the North Street Corridor, are all going to be using these local streets to connect to the Merritt, to go northbound. So, the idea is how, how do we, next slide, please? So, how do we come up with ideas that we can bring to the town in a more constructive way to, to, to demonstrate our concerns, but not strictly in a, kind of a, a NIMBY kind of argument? So, we developed this neighborhood protection plan that would be driven by sound traffic engineering principles and analysis. Next slide, please. That is inspired by a lot of the work that the town's already doing as part of their Complete Streets initiatives, which, for some that may not know, it's an approach to planning, designing, and, and building streets that enable safe access for all users, pedestrians, bicyclists, as well as motors. Next slide, please. Traffic calming is not new to people that drive around Greenwich. It's, it's, it's pretty prevalent on, on local and public streets as well. Some of the more aggressive implementations, I have a couple of examples here, and this is clearly isn't a inventory of townwide, but Bell Haven, Rock Ridge, West Lion Farm, they all include some really innovative traffic calming measures that benefit the people that live in these communities. Unfortunately, the benefits are mostly targeted at these private communities. So, I think we could, we could challenge ourselves a little better to see where these are appropriate outside of, you know, why not all our residents could benefit from them? them? So next slide, please. The neighborhood protection plans, I don't need to read through all of these, but we identified a number of strategies that are targeted specifically at Round Hill that could also be broadened throughout the, throughout the town, whether they're pavement treatments or reduced speed limits. And, and speed limits is important, by the way, because although, you know, you get an argument on an enforcement side of things, where the speed limits are important is it factors into the Google Maps and Waze and Endrick's algorithms that are part of the problem in pushing traffic on these roadways in the first place. Pushing down the, the speed limits makes it less attractive for those software to push people off the Merritt onto our roadways. So a lot of these ideas, too, are, are easily, things we can do easily on a pilot basis in the short term, and other ideas that might require more of a longer-term capital effort. I want to use one example here that, on my next slide, that regarding double yellow center lines. And this is, I don't know, this is what I found interesting. Margarita called me a little nerdy when I shared this with her. But from a traffic engineering perspective, these double yellow center lines are not beneficial in a, could be considered wrongly applied in some of these local streets. And there are specific engineering guidelines of when they should be deployed, and I think a lot of these guidelines are not being met on some of our local streets. The guidelines are defined on the slide. If you notice in the picture, John Street, for example, that these double yellow center lines denote territory, especially if you have a white edge of pavement lines. So they provide, they provide a psychological sense of confidence to drivers that no vehicles will encroach on their side of the road, and that drivers will become more aggressive on overtaking bicyclists who are now considered to be in their way or in the middle of the lane. So reexamining the appropriate use of these pavement markings can make a considerable difference in how people behave. I have a rendering on the next slide. This is, so this is John Street. Now, John Street looks like it was designed by, you know, a Porsche commercial, the way it's laid out, a nice rolling hills. And we're not recommending that we remove the pavement markings on John Street, I'd be very clear at that. I just wanted to show an example of how transformative, how transformative it could be, and how much these pavement markings really define the environment. Right? It looks like a completely different road, John Street, without it. Now, what an application that might be more appropriate is probably the next slide, which is Porchuck Road. Which, again, this might be an idea that we'd love to be able to sit down with the engineering department and really get their opinion on, kind of bringing Porchuck Road back to a local roadway serving the neighborhoods and having the cut-through traffic behave appropriately. And we have some, some gates in there. I don't know, you know, that could be under discussion on Porchuck, but you could also see the benefit of similar improvements around, you know, maybe a few block radius around schools, and how transformative that could be as well. So in summary, next slide, please. The current conditions, obviously, on Round Hill Road are not, are not sustainable with the crashes and the direction that we're going in. And you can understand a little bit of the context here why the future is very intimidating for the residents here. Our challenge is was try to get feedback to the town in a more constructive way and not strictly with a NIMBY type of argument. And that is through our proposal for this neighborhood protection plan. Next slide, please. The, I gave you a couple elements of, of what would be included in the plan, but it's also, you know, a couple ideas could be that this plan could be a requirement with every site plan application of a predetermined size. Or it could be conducted standalone by utilizing the Safe Streets and Roads for All program, which the town has just been very successful applying for. And this absolutely checks all the boxes that they released funding for. And again, number two, we did always have the idea of the planning and zoning, giving them the tools to help them do their very difficult job. And, you know, it does fit in with the vision of the town. And lastly, I'm so happy I don't have to change the quote on the slide, Mr. Selectman, but that has been part of our inspiration as well. So I'm, I'm sorry, I ran through stuff very quickly and I'm, I'm running over your time, but, you know, as John mentioned, we would like to engage the town, we would like to continue to keep P&amp;Z engaged as well, but we didn't want to get too far ahead of ourselves without checking in with you all.
Don, thank you so much, and John, and Brendan. We've had these discussions for close to four years now, and yes, this is something that we've taken seriously, the Complete Streets. We've, you know, looked at sidewalks, crosswalks, improved intersections, shortening roads to, to, to slow the traffic down, but also to not impede the progress of a public safety vehicle like a, a fire engine. And I think that's, we are definitely interested in talking with you on this and the recommendations that you have, because I'd like to have something with TPW in the room, and the Fire Department, and the Police Department, and GEMS, so, because those are the ones that we have to worry about. And a lot of times, you know, when I, we've been talking about one of the streets in Riverside the past few years about putting speed bumps, and, and DPW generally doesn't like to do that anymore, but I, I personally think it makes sense in some places. And you're correct that a lot of the private associations for decades have had the, the white picket fences there to slow them down. And again, as long, and from my perspective, and that's why I want them in the room, I'm all for doing that, but I want to make sure that they're, when, like, when we did the intersection improvement at Elm Street, we had the trucks, the Fire Department come down at six in the morning and test whether they can get around there, and they could do it. And believe me, we had people showing up, including elected officials, who were looking for something to oppose and to make sure that it, and they saw that it actually worked. So I think maybe looking at things like that, you showed the slide on Riversville going into North Porchuck, and I agree with you, there's a lot of pavement there, right? And it looks wide enough for, you know, a tractor-trailer, right? Now, we just want to make sure a fire truck can get in there, and of course, Amazon trucks, but they're not that big. And so maybe it's time to reexamine some of these things, and if, God, if we can take out some of that impervious surface and put some, some soil down and slow down traffic, that's a win-win. But I, like you, like everybody here, I don't want to get ahead of myself because I get excited when we talk about pedestrian safety, but I definitely want to set something up with those entities that I mentioned before, and let's work at it. Let's work at it. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I agree. I was thinking about, you know, you've had the dialogue with planning and zoning, and I think DPW is the logical, you know, next step, what's possible. I found this to be very informative and very thorough, so thank the three of you and the whole Round Hill Association for putting this forth. Very interesting concept to remove the double yellow lines. I live on a street with double yellow lines, and the speeding is just unbelievable. So that is extremely interesting to me, you know, what's our ability to remove them to slow down the cars. And then the speed limit, I know that when we first took office in 2019, we were talking about Waze and Google Maps coming on Porchuck. So the speed limit, that's interesting as well, that, that might play into the routing software. So that's another interesting angle or thread to pull, to pull on. So thank you so much. I found this to be very informative and look forward to, you know, getting more people to weigh in and understand what's possible.
Yeah, we understand that, obviously, DPW is the key player here. Talking to them with your endorsement is very different than us just talking to them. So this is an important step, so thank you.
I believe Margarita, I wouldn't like to speak. Do you have your comments?
Oh, good, great.
Sure. So I just want to echo my colleagues, thank you so much. Absolutely informative and interesting. I just wonder, have you reached out to our Active Transportation Task Force? Because they are also advocates of Complete Streets. I'm sure that they would love to join you in, in your advocacy for this. You know, not, not to mention, it helps the town in our Safe Streets for All grant process.
I have not, but it's something we definitely will look forward to doing.
Margarita?
Hi.
Hi.
Might you all consider some sort of task force or a meeting where we bring all the stakeholders into the room? Because this is also what we're hearing from Glenville, this is what we're hearing from all the other resident, all the other neighborhood associations. As you all know, we, we clocked high speeds down Orchard, the traffic consultant clocked very high speeds down Orchard when they were looking at Central Middle School. I sent you an email earlier this week, the high speeds, the very high traffic flows, that if there's a way we can address this and get everyone into the room, it would be fantastic, because I think none of us could do this alone.
Thank you, Margarita.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. That's a terrific idea. We are hearing about this from every other neighborhood, and having grown up on Orchard Street, and having had two dogs hit over the years, and it's still going on. And it's only worse now with, with these and more cars, right? I keep giving those statistics about how much it's changed in 54 years with the, with the cars from 69 to now. So that would be a great idea, because it's, rather than, because you are leading this, and Brendan, you, you know, you came back at the beginning of our term, you were the first of all the neighborhoods, and they've, we've, they've all hit us on this. And it's an issue. It is an issue. So I think having a holistic, you know, saying this can be expanded to other ones, this is not a NIMBY issue. You definitely have our total support on this, and maybe convening a task force with the departments involved, have a representative from each one, and going at it from a Greenwich-based solution, even though you've led on this, but you're incorporating everybody else, and that's, that's a powerful thing going forward.
Small, small suggestion, maybe rather than a task force, because bodies tend to have, you know, take on a life of their own, maybe call it a roundtable. And that way, that way can convene all the interested parties and share information.
Yeah, let's think about it. Yeah, let's think, whatever. I think we're all on the same page about the getting there, whatever we call it, but we could talk about that. But I think there's widespread agreement here, because we're all about active transportation. We want people out there, we, we don't want people being sedentary, but we just want them to do it safely. So I know, Peter, you raised your hand, too?
Yeah. Peter Alexander.
I think Brendan wanted to speak.
Oh, Brendan. And then, to be followed by Brendan.
Peter Alexander, definitely joining my fellow landscape architects in supporting this big time. Also, I'd like to give a presentation next week, and he just saved about five of those slides, so. I got back on it, it's very exciting. Thank you for, for doing that.
Thank you.
It's good to see you three guys in the same seats, too.
Thank you so much. Brendan?
Just real fast, I'm Brendan D. Simone, the Executive Committee Member of the Round Hill Association. Thanks for having us, congratulations. I will say, doing this the last couple of years, I've learned so much, and I did attend the Active Streets Task Force, and that was really the first time I realized that a lot of other neighborhoods had the exact same problems we had. And I heard Jim Michael say at that meeting that it's hard, because people live here for a long time, and they're used to things being a certain way, no sidewalks or, you know, no speed bumps, and it's hard to marry their desires to keep things where they are with new people coming in. So I think there's got to be a way to find a consensus that works for everybody. I'm happy to work with--
Wasn't that one of your forum questions?
There you go. I'm happy to work with Don and his team. I will tell you, we've learned so much from Don Ton and Sam Swart Engineering, they're brilliant people, and I commit to being on a task force, a roundtable, whatever it needs to be, all over the town, not just for our neighborhood. I'm, I'm committed to doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Brendan, I appreciate it.
One second before we, Ms. Taylor, did you wish to speak or have you changed your mic?
Is it relevant to this discussion?
Is this discussion or just a general comment, Ms. Taylor? Good morning.
Is this a, to be a general comment or to this specific item?
Oh, it's a public comment regarding the veteran parade.
We will recognize you in a few minutes to disclose this, and then--
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, somebody keeps lowering my hand. Could I add just one more thing?
It's not me. Go ahead.
Okay. I, I do that to people, too. I was cracking up, I'm like, oh my gosh, someone's pulling my tricks. Just one thing, and I mentioned this to you all, to the Board of Selectmen, when I first moved to Greenwich, '86, the town emptied during the day, during a weekday. We now have 32,000 to 35,000 people who work in town, and we know a lot of those folks don't live here, they're commuting in. And the Glenville folks, they talked about folks that jump off the highway and come through Glenville on their way to work. Same thing Round Hill is seeing, and they don't live here, so they don't have a sense of protecting our children and our residents. Not criticizing them, it's just what happens. So it's another piece of the puzzle to consider, that we have now become a net importer of employees, and that really changes our traffic pattern. Okay, bye.
Thank you, Margarita.
Thank you, Margarita. We'll lower that hand, though. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Peter, speak, drop the microphone, because-- Peter Alexander, for a second time.
Yes. Excuse me, I wanted you to point out that we all lived through the tolls on the Merritt Parkway and the thruway, and then the incredible traffic coming up and down Riversville. I was still trying to make it to the Winter Olympics and riding my bike up there, but we have to be really careful, there's a federal law that could come in effect, that tolls have to come back, and that's the shortcut, makes today look easy.
Thank you. I remember those toll battles in the legislature very well, and they'll probably still be there, but, okay, no, this is really good. Don?
No, thank you, apologize for running so over.
You kidding me? This was really, really helpful. It's, it fits into what we want to do, and we'll circle back and, whatever we call it, maybe a blue ribbon task force, something like that, but I think it's something, Jenny, something that we definitely want to follow up on with.
So I just wanted to ask if we can publicly post this, along with, you know, whether it's part of the minutes or some portion of it that we could share--
Okay.
--on the website and promote in your weekly email.
I don't think I can put a warning big enough on my slide for John Street with the pavement markings, so if I could just remove that slide--
But the whole presentation, or just what you showed today?
Yeah, just what I showed today.
Okay.
We can probably write it next meeting, I think we'll time to--
Okay, thank you, that would be great, just to--
Maybe you could work together to see which, you know, if there's something you don't want in there, just, we'll work it out.
Okay, great.
It'd be, it'd be helpful to get it out, because we want, we want the public to be involved and certainly educate them also, but they're all have, in the same, having the same issues.
Get it up next.
Okay, perfect.
Great, thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everybody, appreciate it. Okay. We, public comment period, so we had Ms. Taylor.
Taylor, you may speak now.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, thank you for allowing me to speak. I have four questions about the veteran matters as per today's agenda, November 9th. However, first, I'd like to state that I'm a veteran who served in the Persian Gulf War. My home of record for military service is the address of my family home at 302 Delavan Avenue in Barham, that's located across the street from the Barham Vets Club. My DD-214 discharge record is filed at the Town of Greenwich Clerk's Office. Regarding today's agenda, state request for temporary closure of Delavan Avenue for November 11th Barham Vets Association March. Butch Bezuto, Barham Vets Association. My first question is, is the man who appeared today instead of Butch Bezuto to discuss the agenda item? He said that his name is Charles Tedesco, and that he's the acting commander. My question, did the Town of Greenwich confirm his contact info for the public to reach him about the event?
Ms. Taylor, Ms. Taylor, that question, no, we did not. People sign up to speak here, we don't do background checks on them, usually they come to us as residents who are known to us. So what is the second question?
Yes, I have a total of four questions. My second question is, which insurance certificates govern the road closure for this event? Is it the Town of Greenwich and/or the Barham Vets?
Okay, what's the third and fourth?
My third question is, does Charles Tedesco have his DD-214 discharge record filed at the Clerk's Office? And my fourth question--
Okay, I'm sorry, go, the fourth question.
Does the, does the Town of Greenwich have a guideline for DD-214-- Does the Town of Greenwich have a guideline for DD-214 discharge certificates for those who appear before the board to discuss veteran matters as they occur at Greenwich? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. You could refer your questions to the Law Department. We're certainly not going to divulge personal information like that as far as the individual you named. So you can certainly reach out to the Law Department for your questions to be answered, but thank you very much for dialing in today. Any other comments before we go on to appointments and nominations? For a third time, he's getting his steps in today.
I'd like to, Peter Alexander, a landscape architect, I'd like to know what I can do to give you all a presentation and be a little shorter than that at even your next meeting.
With Ken, just get on the calendar, and thank you very much.
Yes.
That's very nice of you. I don't think we've gotten any flowers.
And I also want to know what the procedure is, there's a, my guy in Toronto's former professor, but he also works for AICOM, has a three-day separated hydrochid and hydrologic study, and I have credits. I would like to see if three of our town employees, unprejudiced, of course, are two landscape architects, but what's the process of giving them the $300 tuitions each?
That's a good question. I guess, maybe you would direct that to the department that would have somebody, an employee that would be, benefit from that. I don't want to say yes or no, I just don't know about procedure there and policy on that, but certainly it's something we can discuss. If you send a note, we can get it over to DPW and the Law Department, and also Risk Management, because everything we do, we have to run by Risk Management.
Thank you all.
It's that era that we're in.
I'll be quiet.
Thank you so much, Peter, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appointments, nominations?
Yes, we have four. So Lauren Raven, I motion that we nominate Margaret McSherry Martino as a new member to the Nathaniel Witherall Board in position R8 for a term expiring June 30th, 2026.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve John Vecchio as a returning member of the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals in position R3 for a term ending October 31st, 2027.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we nominate Mark Perry as a returning member of the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals in position A1 for a term expiring October 31st, 2027.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
And finally, Lauren Raven, I motion that we nominate Dennis Jesky as a returning member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, position R4 for a term expiring October 31st, 2026.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Thank you very much, Lauren, and thank you, those four, for stepping forward to volunteer. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Thank you so much to everybody who tuned in. Thank you, Ken, thank you, Jenny, thank you, Don, thank you, Barbara Schellenberg, and thank you, Andy in the back. Take care.